Let's start again.
Okay.
Let's bring the meeting to order. This is the Historic District Commission, Town of Fairfield. Today is November 25th, 2025. The notice of this hearing was published on the website. Let's go ahead and take attendance. George Clark.
Here.
Jim Bohan.
Happy to be here.
Jim Acomondo.
Here.
I believe that's it. I'm Rosina Negron. Absent today are Darren Reitman-Locke, Art Gravanes, Mara Garrick, and Greg Valente. The first and only item in the agenda is the pre-application discussion for Candace Singleton and Nicolas Pagnosi, 106 Old Post Road for Fairfield, Connecticut, for a property located at 106 Old Post Road. Is there anyone here to present this project?
Yeah, my name's Sharon Lee. I'm going to be the project manager for this project as soon as we get approved, obviously. And I work with my colleague, Patricio, who's also on the line, who presented at your last meeting. So I will get us started with what we've done since that time and then hopefully initiate a good discussion about what you like, what you don't like, what, how you can assist us in helping the Pagnossis get the project that they'd like to see.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so since that time, we have, since the meeting that we presented at, we worked with the owner in terms of, first of all, what our intent was with the initial. I think we focused a lot, so I'm showing you a rendering of one option. I'm going to show you three options that we've come up with. And I think our focus was sort of, can everyone see my cursor moving?
No, you're not sharing yet.
You're not sharing. Because it says it's still connecting.
It should be on the bottom of your screen. Okay.
Yeah, no, I hit sharing and it says it's still connecting. Here, let me, let me get out and let me try and get back in. Okay, so option one. Still connecting. Okay.
No.
Yeah. So, and these options aren't in a particular order. What we tried to do was take the comments we received from the last meeting. And as I was saying previously, I think our focus was initially that already the roof that was approved was fairly large. And so I think we felt that we were trying to create something more like what we have today on top and take, you know, make this roof obviously smaller. And so we took the comments from the commission. And I think we've tried to better show that we've embraced the setback. We've created a little setback that sort of highlights the hallway that's going to connect to this new primary suite. And then we have a couple of options to show you and keeping some of those same details. And I think that this starts to highlight the original house and but still acknowledge and coordinate with the original house and keep some of the, a couple of the things that the owner wanted. So now I'm going to switch to, just to flip through. I don't think I can flip this way, though. So in option two is, and are you seeing a different option now?
No.
No, okay, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to stop sharing each time, unfortunately. Okay, so. Then an option two, very similar. Basically, what we've done is changed the window to a larger centralized window based on our discussion that had more to do with our discussion with the owner to bring more light into the space.
We don't have your plan.
Yep, sorry. Now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
The only change here is sort of a larger center window. Again, stylistically, we haven't matched, but we would sort of match this style. We've been trying to develop these options and then adding some dormers that are similar to the dormers that are on the original house. And then one more option that we investigated, and again, I'm going to stop sharing. And go to option three. Which is again, the center window now without the doors. Again, trying to maybe, in a sense, make it a little less like the original house, somewhat subservient to the original house. Similar setbacks. In each case, we did keep the balcony. We, we feel like if the balcony is too much of an other for the commission, it's something that we could remove, but it is something that the homeowners were very interested in. So we've continued to show it. But the design still works with or without the balcony. That's what we wanted to show you today. I can, you know, obviously go through the, you know, the other sections and elevations of how it works, but wanted to kind of focus on the fact that we do have the setback. The actual volume is significantly smaller than the original house. And, you know, just on our top.
Are you able to show us the three options just in elevation? Please?
Just in elevation?
Yes.
Let me hold on one second. Let me just get to the right page in the drawing. And then, and just so you remember from the meeting, what we show in the elevation is the original, the current, the way the house currently looks. And then the image at the bottom is the new elevation. So let me just get to the right page on each one. Okay, so this is option one, the elevation. We've also changed the, so that the siding sort of more closely reflects the cedar shingle that is on the existing house. Can I switch to option two?
Yes.
So option two. Again, similar setback. This is with the dormer. Larger window. And then. Option three. Without the dormer.
Okay. George, do you have any questions or comments?
I still think it's an awful lot of house on the, on the, I still think it's, it's, it's a lot of house on the left. I think, I think that what I'm not sure you're understanding from my point of view is that, is that when we, when we approved the plan for the garage and the roof on that garage, I think we were, we were, we're putting ourselves out there with a large addition on a small house. And now what we've done is we've taken another bite at a larger addition next to the original house. I just, I, I don't know, I'd be interested in the other commissioners' feedbacks, but I think it's, it's, it's a lot of house on the left. And it kind of, you kind of lose the first, lose the original, original structure. But I'm interested, this is a committee, and I'm interested in everybody's opinion.
If I may ask a question, I think what we think we're doing is sort of improving on what was a lot of roof and sort of trying to complement the existing house. So the space is already up here. It's actually framed for the second floor. But I think that something of this nature is sort of an improvement on this, although, you know, a little bit more detail, a little bit taller, but.
Just, I, I see that, as I say, it's what I see, I just, but there's a committee, I'm only one chip in the night, I'll listen to others.
Okay, Jim Bohan?
Yeah, I, um. It's hard to imagine it in the context of other houses. How do other commissioners feel about that? Are other commissioners getting a good picture of what this is going to look like with a drawing of just the house without the surroundings?
Usually, we appreciate when the streetscape is provided. So that actually gives a sense of how it fits in the context of.
What it's going to look like.
So, yeah.
Okay, I think that's great feedback. And we'll definitely, we'll definitely do that.
Now, when you were talking about option two.
Yes.
Option two.
Rendering or the, or the elevation? Would you like to see?
The symmetrics.
Okay.
Option three.
Give me one second.
There was talk of, now you see a balcony. And I did not see a balcony in the elevation of option three. And now I think I see a balcony on the left-hand side of the drawing you just showed. Is that the balcony you were speaking of?
Yes. Hold on one second, let me just, I'm just changing the drawing to, I'm just going to option three. So. There's a little balcony off the side of the house that we've, that we've left.
The balcony. There was a balcony. You were referring to when you were talking about option three.
Right.
When, when we were looking at the, okay.
Yeah, so this is option three. We've left the balcony on all the options because we feel that we can easily remove it and, and just continue this little trim of roof around and. I'm trying to figure out exactly what we should work on and present to you. Though I understand from the one commissioner that it still feels very large. But to get a room on top of this, is there, is the feeling that bringing it down further would, would make it feel smaller? And I think the one thing we, wasn't discussed in the meeting is that there is a room up here on the third floor of the existing house.
Jim Bohan, do you have any other comments or questions?
No, no, just that I, I think just an idea of what the surroundings look like would be a big help.
Okay, and I think that's really fair. And I think you would, you get a really good idea that this is kind of sort of proportional like the other houses.
I got another question, another idea. If the siding on the addition were not the same and it looked like it was different, would it be, would it, would that, would that change the relationship? You'd have the original structure looking as it does. And then maybe the, the addition isn't additive, but is a second, is a separate look. Does that, that make sense?
It does, actually. And that's one thing we haven't actually looked at. We, I was playing with the siding to make it more like the cedar shingle that was approved on the, on the original house. But we could do something so that maybe just continue this siding from the garage up so that the house, sort of, the original house stands out sort of from a material standpoint.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, it's certainly worth looking at. So we'll definitely take a look at that. What I'll call a material change on the exterior.
Yeah.
Jim A, do you have any questions or comments?
Comments? First, thank you for these three different renditions and the elevations here. I think it looks proportional, in my personal opinion. And the one that I think looks most fitting, if you will, to me is the rendition number two with the dormers.
Okay.
And I would like to see what the warmer one looks like with the two windows as opposed to the big window. Because I really liked, when you showed rendition, I want to say number one, and it looked almost identical to the original house. And then you added the dormers, but you put the big window in.
Right, right.
You actually put the, I, I just, again, I'm not opposed to the big window, but I, and I'm, I think the dormers look great. I think proportionally, it looks diminished from the original house. That's my personal opinion. And I'm just wondering what it might look like with the two smaller windows spaced apart and the dormers. That's one, one elevation you didn't run. But, yeah, I think it actually, I mean, I'm, I'm open to the suggestions that were made by the two previous commissioners, but I kind of like the contiguous siding matching the first house. But again, I'm open to seeing what it looks like. But I personally like the dormers. I think it really matches, and I would love to see the dormers with the two, two windows.
Okay. Yeah, that was just a, that was, we were right up to the minute drafting these options. So we're happy to take a look at the two-window option. It's just, again, we were trying to put as many options out in front of the commission as possible for both feedback and some direction as we prepare for the next meeting. So this is really helpful and I'm happy to show you. And I'll just flip back to the two-window.
In my mind, it did what you were trying to achieve, which was diminished. I mean, when I look at the existing exterior and then I look at the proposed exterior with the dormers on it, I think the proposed is far, to me, far more historic than the, and representative than the, than the first one. The first one, yeah. So, yeah, still, again, my personal opinion.
Yeah. And I will tell you that the owners happen to really like this option as well.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Um, can I see the first option again, please?
Absolutely, give me one second.
And what is the main difference between the first option and the third option? Is it just a center window?
Uh, no, and the dormers, and option one, we, we don't show the, the dormers either.
Yeah, to me, if you throw the dormers on that, that, that might look pretty cool, like, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that, I think you're right. I think, again, we took a concept and we're really working on showing the articulation. And then we're working on the windows. And to be honest, we put the, the intent was to put the two windows back on to option three as well. This was just one of our last efforts since we were preparing for today. So, but I thought that getting the proportion of the volume was really important, understanding how we get this detailing in the front, et cetera. And really emphasize.
Is there a way that you could put all three options together so that we can see them rather than jumping back and forth?
Back and forth, yeah. Can you just give me one minute and I will do, and I will do that.
And perhaps the elevations are better than the isometrics, at least for me, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, which one? The elevations or the?
If you can do like all three of the proposed, we don't need to see the garage, assisting option, but if you can put all three next to each other so that we can see side to side what exactly you guys are proposing.
Absolutely, the elevations, though?
Yeah, yes, please.
Okay, give me one second.
Kind of, I, I defer a little from what Jim Acomondo was mentioning in terms of the dormers. I feel the dormers are competing with the existing original house. We are trying to look at what the house looked originally. I know the garage is an addition, but kind of the difference between one house with the full edition garage and second floor together, I feel that dormers are competing with that original house. But that's just my personal opinion.
Just give me one more minute and I'll be right with you.
There's your turn.
Okay. Okay. So can everyone see my screen now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So the two-window option, no dormers, the large window with dormers and the large window without dormers. I will say that one thing that sort of is coming, at least for us to light, is the stairway is kind of its own, you know, the entrance into the main house is its own thing. And I think the balcony gives a bit of a reference back to that where there is no other reference on the house. But I kind of like that aspect of it.
Yeah, this is helpful to see all three options side by side. I lean more towards the first option. But I think, look, looking at these options in the context of the streetscape might be definitely more helpful. I feel that the dormer competes a little bit too much with the existing house. But if other commissioners have any other comments or questions, they're more than welcome to.
And we could play with the detailing on that, maybe. But if the preference is just more towards the simple roof, if that's the, the direction.
Is, is there any bar on the existing house?
Is there any what, copper?
Dormer, yes.
Oh, the dormer, yeah, these are, these are existing dormers.
The one on the left-hand side is not, right.
The addition is, it's new.
This is the new, everything here, garage and all of this is existing. It's this part that's new, just this little section and this section. Right.
I think I gravitate towards number one. But I have one thing that just kind of rubs me wrong.
Okay.
I like, I like, I like the position of the center window. I'm, I'm, I don't understand why the windows are at the extremes on the upper left. There could be things going on inside that you're working, working with, I understand. But you see what I'm saying? If you could put the windows together, if you, you put the windows together and the two other options, then you could make them a little closer and that one, it wouldn't be the extreme. you could make them a little closer and that one, it wouldn't be the extreme, but that's, no.
Though, I think that, um, so what we've created on the, uh, in this master suite has the bathroom and the closet at the back of the room. And really there's, and then there's the entrance to the room off the, um, what is facing right side and then windows on the other side. So the one place for the bed that we've is between those windows, but they certainly could be closer together and sort of maybe relate more to the existing house. I, I hesitate because again, we're, we're trying to thread this needle of allowing the, the original house to be prominent.
I, I see what George is saying, that the, the spacing of the windows on the second floor, left-hand side is kind of out of harmony with the spacing of the windows on the right-hand side.
Okay. Agreed.
If you could make the windows, if you could make the windows come together for the large window. And we're not going to sound stupid here, but what you could be able to make the windows come together for the other one.
So when you say come together, do you mean sort of more proportional with the way the spacing is on the existing house? Or do you mean actually put the two windows together?
No, they shouldn't, they don't need to be together. They just need to be closer together.
Proportional.
Understood, understood. Yeah, agreed.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't want to design your house, that's not fair.
No, no, no. I think it's the reasonable, it's something that we continue to look at. I think that it was more driven by a furniture issue, but it's not necessary that they be that sort of.
I think not having the dormers, and I get to his point of view, they are nice, but if I, maybe if I were building a house that wasn't, wasn't in historic district, I might be fine with the, with the context of the dormers. But in, in, in what we're, what you're trying to achieve here in the district, adding a piece to an existing house, trying to maintain the, the stylistic nature of the original house, I think that the dormers compete. And I think not having them is a, is a, is a nice, is, is a, is a positive.
Okay.
Any other questions that either the commissioners or the presenters have?
I think.
And the portrait on the left, Jim, about anybody else, I don't have an issue with the portrait on the left, to be honest with you. So I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't make it go away unless, unless somebody else, unless it bothered somebody else.
I think I asked last time, and I'm afraid I don't remember the answer. When was this house built? Was it in the 1840s?
1831, it says.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's true. Any other thoughts or questions or anything that I can show you? I'll definitely plan to bring a street kit, a streetscape, so you can see both sides of the street and how it fits in.
Or two.
Just to convey what, what
A good compromise?
What the neighboring houses look like.
Yeah.
Yeah, kind of, you're getting closer to a good compromise, but putting the streetscape together might be helpful for everyone during the actual presentation.
Okay, understood. Definitely, we'll definitely be working on that. And do most people present that with just photos or do they actually try and render and, or you get different? You probably get
It could be either way, as long as we can see the streetscape. You can take a photo and you can superimpose your design into that actual streetscape. That will be fine, so.
Okay. Yeah, well, we'll show you, we'll show you both, we'll show you the existing house and how it fits in the streetscape now, and then we'll show you how the design fits. Okay?
That's probably a good, good trick.
I think that will be helpful.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Um, I, I think I'm going to focus on removing the dormers and the two windows. And we will come back and have sort of more tailored presentation for you at the next go-around.
Okay.
Cool.
So if
Thank you.
If there's not any other questions, thank you for the presentation. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'm gonna go with Jim A. Um, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, we appreciate the feedback.
Thank you.
All in favor of adjourning?
All in favor.
Jim, are you voting?
Yes. Videos, yes.
Jim Bohan, sorry.
Yes, and thank you.
We can adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you for everyone.
Have a, have a great, happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thanksgiving, yeah.
Happy journey.